Berkshire Regional School District on July 26, 2019 will now come to order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being audio and videotaped, and if anybody in the audience is doing so, would you please let us know at this time? If not, all who are able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, individual republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rattell, Kathy, would you please step forward? Mr. DiFazio?
Here.
Ms. DiTomaso?
Here.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Farley will not be here. Mr. Hagmeyer? Mr. Hengly?
Here.
Mr. Lecatelle?
Here.
Mrs. Lazzari?
Yes.
Mr. Lexis Mahler? Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Paul?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagen?
Here.
Dr. Craftries?
Here.
We do still have an open seat in Washington. Mr. Rattells?
Here.
Our CBA rep and our student rep are not here tonight. We have a forum. Okay. The chair certifies that this is in fact the agenda, and at this point, I open the door to any responses from the audience. Keep in mind, we welcome your input, and you have 30 minutes for this portion. If you wish to speak, please be recognized by the chair, and in consideration of others, please keep your comments brief, whether any comments from the audience. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Because we have guests tonight, we thought we would move around the agenda a little bit to accommodate our visitors. So I'm going to turn this over to Lori, who will talk about our guests and introduce them.
Sure, and I will invite Mr. Peters, Art Colvin, and the chair to join me in anything he'd like to add. But what we are going to start with is that Carl Franceschi and Vladimir Lubetsky are here from DRA. They are the design team that has really guided this project for us, and they have been incredible to work with and extremely responsive to our input. And they have done a ton of work on what will be submitted next to the MSBA, which is the design development package that was voted on tonight and approved by the school building committee for submission to the MSBA. So they're going to go over that with you, so you're familiar with it as well. And then also after that, we wanted to briefly introduce Steve Killian from Bar &amp; Bar. Bar &amp; Bar was the construction firm that was hired by the school building committee to lead the work on the construction phase of the project. You'll learn more about them and see them more often as we break ground on this project. So Steve will introduce himself and say a little bit about Bar &amp; Bar and what they'll be doing.
The only thing I will add is, we did meet today at the school building committee. We also had a working group session before that, and today's working group session was on the budget, and one of the, one of our motions tonight for the, for the moving the school building project forward is about the budget. And we, we spent a good deal of time this past week, the committee and the, and the school has with, with DRA and the team to take money out of the school program, basically doing the value engineering. And we took quite a bit out, I think you're going to see in their presentation tonight, some of the money we did already take out of the program to try and reduce the burden on the towns. And you'll see that in, I think, your presentation.
All right. Turn it over to Carl. Turn it around this way.
Hello again. Hope you can see that. We'll go through this fairly quickly. This is the presentation we, we shared with the, the working group and the building committee today over at Acona. As was mentioned, this is a design development phase of the project. It's a key milestone in the project, one of the required submissions to the MSBA. We just want to share with you, as we did with the building committee, the components to that, and briefly describe them, and allow you to ask questions if you have them as well. But let me sort of physically demonstrate what's going to be submitted next week and with your approval and the building committee's approval. There's basically three parts to this submission. A binder with a lot of paperwork, because this is a state agency we're dealing with, and they like to see certain key documents that, that basically demonstrates that, at this point in the project, we're still consistent with what we submitted previously. They want to make sure that the scope is the same, the budget's the same, and the schedule's the same, for the most part. That's the sort of basic of it. And it has those components to it. There's a design development manual, which is a sort of short form of project specifications that, that describe all the materials and systems that go into the project. And then there's a set of drawings, and this is half of the set so far. This is volume one. There is a volume two back in the office I didn't bring with us, but these are the architectural and site drawings for the high school as it stands right now at, at this phase, so-called design development. And as I mentioned, the, the key components here are really down here, the project budget with the construction cost estimates. This is a, you know, a checkpoint in the, in the process to make sure that the process is still on budget. And, and the drawings themselves obviously are describing the project visually, graphically, so that both the MSBA and the consultants they hired to review these materials can see that the project is still consistent with the schematic design, which it is. But we'll share it with you again, just in case you haven't looked at it in a while, but the floor plan is very similar, almost identical to the schematic design layout. We did modify the main entrance a little bit, both from an aesthetic point of view and from a, from a financial point of view to sort of simplify it and save some money, but also it actually makes it a little more functional, we think. It, it does that, that, that job of, of being sort of a holding point for visitors before they go further into the school nicely, and it accommodates people coming from, from either side of the site, whether you arrive by car or by bus. You enter in there, and you'll see it three dimensioning in a moment, but we think it sort of fits better with the overall architecture of the building. But otherwise, the layout is, is as it's been before. The heart of the building is this student commons on the ground floor, which is sort of the lobby for both the auditorium and the gym. It's also the cafeteria space at lunchtime for the kitchen right here. And then towards the back of the site, south facing, are the, the two-story classroom wings. And they're organized, as always, as they've been, in sort of these pods with large and small classrooms spaces, special ed rooms, boys' and girls' rooms, a teacher's space, a science room, and, and open space for collaboration. That's still sort of the core of the academic space in the school. There were four of those pods in, in the building, obviously two on each floor. And in the center is what we call in the 21st century now, not the library, the media center, but the learning commons, because it is a very different kind of space. There aren't as many books, there are different kinds of activities happening in there, there's more open space, and the sort of related project spaces off of it, large and small, and there's even some open space out here on the balcony overlooking that student common. So it accommodates a lot of different learning styles, as, as was intended in the education plan. The, the site plan also is very similar to the schematic design that, that the entire district voted on back in April. The building's still sited on what basically is now the, the baseball field. There's a parent drop-off on this side, a bus drop-off on this side, the main entrance drive in the middle right on the axis with the entrance. There's some student parking and some staff parking, and then there's still a fire lane around the building as well. And then, once the old building comes down, a new baseball field, a new multipurpose soccer field, and, and practice area is built in its, in its place, just as was proposed previously. The rest of the site is, is not part of the project. The football field and track remain, and current soccer field remain as is. So again, the, the development of this design is, is very consistent with the schematic plans that we've had, very few changes there. Here's the, the rendering of the front, and, and this is where you might notice some change, where this is that sort of new entrance expression now. The glass of the student commons expresses itself on the front of the building, which kind of announces the presence and, and clearly marks the entrance. So there's a, a bit of an overhang now too as well to protect these doors and coverage at the front there. And we've reduced the, the wing wall that used to project out here before, and, and saved some cost in that, in that way. Here's what it looks like now. We've sort of translated that, that artist sketch into a, into a computer model that we can sort of walk around the building. So here's a little more of a close-up. So here's the, you know, the front doors. The administration is immediately adjacent to that. This is the gymnasium on that side, and the auditorium is, is to the right there as you enter the building. That's looking straight on now as you enter from Old Windsor Road. That's what it would look like. So just sort of go around the building here, so you can see, there's still a curve here in plan, and, and this is the central common space. It now has a glass front to it. And please ignore these curvy concrete stripes. We're changing that to be straight bands. This is just a, a little bit of an earlier model, so we, we've simplified that too. The, the site plan isn't quite updated, but the building model is. Going around the building, the, the two-story section in the back of the classrooms are predominantly, there's two basic materials at the corners. There's, we sort of open up the corners with, with the glass curtain wall here, and then the, the rest of the facade are these concrete sandwich panels and, and strip windows here. And you can see the majority of it is facing south, so it gets a lot of nice natural sunlight in there, both good for natural lighting and, and for passive solar heating. And in the center of the building is the learning commons on the upper floor and the student commons below with a little bit of an outdoor patio in this courtyard on, on the south side of the building. And here, just carrying around the building now, you can see the, the two-story volume here. This is the service area back here, and here's the gym. You can see the, the solar panels on the slope of the, of the gym roof there. There's the learning commons on the back, going around the building. As we mentioned, here's the locker rooms, the gymnasium, the front entrance there. And then, as we approach the, the front door and then go inside, here's what it would look like inside. Again, these are still early, but it gives a good sense of the space and the light that will be in that student commons. There'll be a lot more students in here than even this rendering shows, I'm sure, at most times. It'll be a very multipurpose space, so it's, as we said, it's the day-to-day entrance to the building. It's also the lobby for special events. It's the cafeteria at lunchtime. It's a hangout space before school and after school for students. To the right is the entrance to the auditorium. To the left is the entrance to the gym. And then a little further down, as you'll see here, is the cafeteria, looking back now at the front entrance there. So on this side is the kitchen, and then in, off of this space are the stairs to the second floor, including a sitting area that's sort of part of those stairs. You can see the amount of light that comes in now. There's high windows all around this space, and then there's some acoustical panels on the ceiling there to help absorb sound in this, in this high space. So there's a little, another view of it. And then if we go up to the second floor, this is the learning commons at the top of the stairs, again, right in the center of the building. And then there's this balcony looking back down where you came from here in the front entrance, and there are the clear story high windows around this space, bringing a lot of natural light into there. This is a view of the auditorium here, about 550 seats with a full stage with a fly tower. Here, we're, we're still working on the design of the, of the sidewalls, but we wanted to make sure that we carry certain materials in the, in the cost estimate, which we have at this point. You can see, there's sort of a main cross aisle where you enter. Here's the entrance to the auditorium. There's a slope floor going down and a step floor up from that cross aisle, but it's fully handicap accessible. You can get to the stage by this. You can get to the lower seating by the ramp on this side or the, or the aisleways. Then again, we have, you know, included the ceiling treatment in here to make sure that's acoustically appropriate for the, for the space. And the gymnasium is, is another space that will be filled with a lot of natural light. There are windows on, on three sides. And the good thing about the orientation, this is north, gets a lot of diffuse light there, and on the other two sides, east and west, we'll, we'll have some film or tint on the windows to, to knock down the glare somewhat, but it'll be a very pleasant interior space. One of the other components that we include in this submission in that binder book is, is a recap of the educational plan again, where we list, as we have in the past, every single space in the building and, and how large they are and how many of them are. And it's again, in a way, for the MSBA to check, is the, is this submission consistent with the plan that was submitted previously? And not only is it consistent, it's, it's identical. So the spaces are all the same, the, the net spaces are virtually identical, and the total gross square footage of the building is identical to where it was before. So even though we, we sort of tweaked the design of that vestibule and the building got a little bigger right there, we reduced space on a few other places to compensate for that, so it netted out to be the same square footage as we submitted previously. So it won't raise any red flags with the state. And then the next important part, the, the total project budget is explained in a form like this that, that goes into the binder. It's, it's what the MSBA calls a Form 3011. It, it again has a, a series of line items that enumerate the costs, both the hard costs and the, and the soft costs. And the good news here is that we are still on budget exactly as we were at schematic design. The construction cost is actually below this number right now, 59.5 million. The soft costs are still in this, still in this category here, the 10,003, and then the contingencies for the owner's contingencies for any unforeseen conditions or, or changes that may come up later is still the same amount, so the total project cost remains at 72.7 million. But the good news is that, as we say, we're on budget, and this is what we recommend submitting to the state, but the actual cost is, is below that number. So here's the target, 59,585. We're right now at 59,400. There's a commons in there, I apologize. And, and we actually have a few other value management items that could reduce that further as we, as we move forward. And, and just to show you the way we got there to help you understand, we hired an independent cost estimator, and then Bar &amp; Bar, Steve Killian's firm, did their independent cost estimate totally separate. You know, we gave them all these documents, they did their pricing. Then we came together on Monday or Tuesday this week to reconcile, to make sure that, you know, the quantities were the same on both sides. And, and after that session, there's where the two estimators were, very close together, 60.5, 60.8, which is not totally unusual, but pretty rare in this business that two estimating firms are that close on a project this size. But you'll notice, it was a little bit higher than the target, so the last few days, we have been checking their numbers and collectively. Lori and Melissa were there, along with our design team and our consultants, and Bar &amp; Bar, obviously, obviously. And, and we came up with 1.4 million worth of so-called value management items. So when we subtract that from this number, that's why we say we're currently at 59.4 million. And we still have a value management list which has several more items on it that we'll be considering in the, in the upcoming months here as we, as we move forward. So as we said today at the building committee, even though we know right now our estimates are under this number, we recommend still submitting this number to the state as, as the budget, so that we still have that cushion in there. Not that we intend to spend it necessarily, and we understand the desire to keep the cost down, and we'll keep working that way. But it's best not to, not to prematurely lower, lower the construction cost in the MSBA's eyes. They may want to lower the overall project cost then and take back their share of the, of the funds, and we don't want that to happen at this point in time. So that, that's the, the budget that, that will get submitted. And the one other item I mentioned, the scope, the, the budget, is the schedule, and again, that hasn't changed either. So just to recap, we're in this phase right now of design development, just completed that. We'll be moving into what's called construction documents, where we take these documents and add dimensions and details and notes to get them ready to go out to bid to contractors. And that will happen this winter, and so that construction can start in the spring. And then the target for completion of the building is August of 2021, so it's a pretty aggressive schedule, but we have confidence in, in Bar &amp; Bar, and with the, with the strategy of having early packages, we believe that's achievable. But then the, the project still continues because they'll, once the school is occupied, then the old school can be demolished and replaced with the playing fields and, and the finished site work, so that will continue on into the spring and maybe the summer of the following year, spring 2022. We're working on, you know, tightening up and finalizing this, this date now that we have a construction manager on board. So that's, that's the schedule, and there's a more detailed schedule that's in the binder as well that goes in, but that's sort of the high-level schedule that we're going to share with the MSBA. So that's where we're at, and what we presented to the building committee today. So.
Thank you.
Well, Carl, I just wanted to say to the audience here as well, you presented the square footage on the, on the school. That square footage is in line with what MSBA says we can have for the school population that we have, that we have to build the school for, correct?
Yes, including.
That's not oversized?
Including the enlarged auditorium, which was approved. Yes, that's all in there. And it's a, it's the allowable square footage from the MSBA.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the gymnasium is also at MSBA's department.
It is. Yeah, not oversized. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you. Steve. Steve. Steve.
I have no PowerPoint. Good.
My name's Steve Killian. I'm with Bar &amp; Bar, I'm the chief operating officer, as well as the principal in charge of this project. Our firm is about a 92-year-old firm. We started in New York as agents for the owner, which was way before there were construction managers. And so we've been doing this style and delivery method of work for the last 92 years. I've been within Bar &amp; Bar for almost 22 years. It's a great firm, believe me. I wouldn't be here if I wasn't. The team you'll have, unfortunately, is not here tonight, but David Vible is the project manager, Tim Senical and Neil Genaway, who lives in the region very closely, like 10 minutes from the job site, is another superintendent on the job. And we have additional, Lois Anross is our project engineer. We have a series of people that will be involved in this project that will be on-site. And so those are the people that will build it. I won't, but I'll be here every step of the way, and I'll be as the principal in charge. It's my responsibility to make sure that you're satisfied with the, the project, and we deliver the best value for the best of all, and as fast as we can. It's an aggressive schedule, but we are used to that. Again, we've done probably $300 million worth of work in, in Western Massachusetts in Berkshire, so we're familiar with the area with the challenges of manpower and make sure it happens. Any questions? See? Just like that with a job, very quick.
Thank you very much.
Just point out, so everybody knows that the MSBA requires us, because of the declining populations, we have to build the school to 80% of the current enrollment. And I've, I've said this in town meetings and things like that, that when we open this school, we're going to be overcapacity. So that, the square footage that is on there is built for 480 students, not for current capacity. So it's, it's actually undersized for what we have right now. But that's the, it's the requirements by the MSBA, just as another footnote on this. So I think next we have to do is, do we, do we want to vote on the?
The approval of submission of the design?
At this point?
Yes, please. Are you going to make a motion?
I will when I find it. Okay. This is the approval of submission of the design development package that was just presented to us. This was what was passed in the school building committee today, but it has to be approved by the school committee. So be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the submission of design development package to the Massachusetts School Building Authority as recommended by the Acona School Building Committee. Are there any questions?
Second. Any questions?
Motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we're reordering the agenda a little bit to accommodate people who are here, and we will go into executive session. But before we do, I just want to publicly say thank you to some people who have been working tirelessly on behalf of the building project. And you've heard from Rich Peters, Tom Callahan's in the audience, and, and Bonnie, where's Bonnie? Bonnie's over there. I've been going to meetings beyond Saturdays nights, just being there, and I really want to say thank you very much for all that you've done for us. I appreciate it.
Thank you. It's all for the kids.
That's right.
I would say that the team effort. That the folks in the audience who are also participants in this weekend meetings and evening meetings and everything else, it took, it took a village to get this done.
Yes, and we appreciate that. Okay, so do I make a motion for executive session?
Yes. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee goes into executive session at?
At 7:27.
7:27 P.M. In accordance with MDL, MDL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy in preparation for litigation for which the chair has declared the executive session is necessary to protect the bargaining position of the committee and to reconvene an open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
Do we make a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, they could roll call.
Correct. Okay, we need a roll call. I won't get that one.
Mr. DiFazio?
Yes.
Ms. DiTomaso?
Here.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Hagmeyer is down here. Mr. Hengly?
Yes.
Mr. Lecatelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lazzari?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wagen?
Yes.
Dr. Craftries?
Yes.
We're in executive session.
Okay, thank you very much. We will reconvene right after executive session, so don't go far. Right out.
Yes, so I'm going to read a couple of motions. These are motions that, for, 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 for information. As, as everybody knows, we've been in, I would say, negotiations with the towns because of the threat of litigation, and we've been working to come up with a compromise solution to move forward without stopping the project that was inadmissible to all parties. And what we have is a couple of motions to read, and, and we have to vote on those motions. One of them is around the voting process and a potential change to the regional agreement, and another one is around trying to reduce the cost of the, of the project. So I'm going to read the first motion. So I make a motion based upon concerns raised, you know, before I start that, sorry. I just want to add that last night, the reason we're reading these motions is last night, the Hindsdale Select Board voted to drop litigation contingent on us passing these motions. So, and, and these, these motions were developed in conjunction with the town of Hindsdale. So I'll start again. I make a motion based upon concerns raised over the processes utilized regarding the April 6, 2019 vote for the occurring of debt for the new Acona High School. That the school committee shall propose an amendment to Section 7 of the, 6 of the CBRSD agreement by adding the following language to such section. In occurrence of debt, the school committee is bound to solely utilize provisions of GLC 7116D and may not utilize provisions of GLC 7116N, nor may the school committee utilize provisions of the final sentence of GLC 7114D to bypass the use of GLC 7116D. And further, that the CBRSD school committee will make decisions using the standing regional agreement until such time as three-quarters of all members, all member towns agree to and approve a revision at a town meeting in accordance with Section 6 of the present agreement. I further move that the school committee present the above amendment to the member towns for consideration by their respective select boards. I further move that the school committee shall present the above amendment, as may be further amended, to carry out the purposes of this motion to the member towns for inclusion on their respective 2020 annual on their respective 2020 annual town meeting warrants pursuant to Section 6 of the present agreement. Any discussion?
We have a motion and do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Motion carries. Motion two.
Second motion. I make a motion based on the feedback this school committee and superintendent have heard, particularly from our smaller town constituents worried about the cost of the new Acona School to the taxpayers of the district who have and continue to support the local school system, that this committee, the superintendent and staff, and the Acona Building Committee members will do everything possible during the value engineering phase of the design build to make all decisions with special attention to integrity of building as they look for comparable construction methods and materials that might reduce the overall costs in good faith with the best intentions and for the greater welfare of our district.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Well, I don't think we can legally commit the school building committee or the superintendent or the staff. All we can do is speak for the district in front of the school committee, but...
I think it goes without saying that we need to try to reduce costs, notably with...
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. We have our discussion, now the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now to move on to our regular agenda. I think we're back on the first page. We don't have student affairs, but we do have the secretary's report, the minutes of the regular meeting on June 27th. Do we have a motion? We have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, any discussion about the minutes? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries, thank you. Financial reports.
I move to approve warrant number PR 20-1 dated July 11th, 2019, payable in the amount of $405,896.26.
Motion in a second for warrant number PR 20-1, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 20-1D dated July 11th, 2019, accounts payable in the amount of $72,258... 256, I'm sorry.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor of warrant PR 20-1D?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 20-1 dated July 16th, 2019, accounts payable in the amount of $1,117,082.17.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion about warrant AP 20-1? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 20... I'm sorry. AP 19W-25 dated July 17th, 2019, accounts payable in the amount of $15,900.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP 19W-25, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 20... Ah, excuse me, I'm sorry. Warrant number AP 19-25 dated July 26th, 2019, accounts payable in the amount of $250,689.6.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP 19-25. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 19-26 dated July 26th, 2019, accounts payable in the amount of $4,730.66.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant AP 19-26, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 20-2 dated July 25th, 2019, payable in the amount of $437,951.93.
We have a motion in a second for warrant PR 20-2, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 20-2D dated July 25th, 2019, accounts payable in the amount of $161,252.63.
We have a motion in a second for warrant number PR 20-2D, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 20-2 dated July 26th, 2019, accounts payable in the amount of $155,402.2.
We have a motion in a second for warrant number AP 20-2, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. Okay, now we have the donation.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the donation of labor and work by R.J. LeBeau to the Acona Regional High School football field.
We have a motion in a second to accept the donation from R.J. LeBeau, any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you, motion carries. Okay, now we are on to communications on the report of the chair. We continue to have a town of Washington School Committee vacancy, and I wanted to talk about the coming to update. Mr. Emerson, do you want to talk about what's been going on?
Well, very little has been going on, actually. Barbara and I reached out to the ad hoc committee to see if they wanted to get together and talk, and we received basically no response from anybody. So I guess we kind of tabled it in light of everything else that was going on with all the other towns, and that's how it went.
Except that we did just recently get a letter from Covington that was to us saying that they support the Hinsdale litigation. So our take is that they perhaps don't know what's going on, so we wrote them a letter to inform them of the changes that have taken place up until tonight. So I think, do you have anything else to add?
Just that in that letter that we sent to you, we reiterated the offer for a meeting. I know one of their select board members is away, so I don't know if they're waiting for, I think their chair to return, but we have reached out now twice to them to meet.
I just wonder how much longer we need to continue reaching out if they're not going to reset up again. That's my feeling.
I would say that, you know, in light of what we just went through with the 16D, 16N, obviously, if we're moving this coming to, we're quite a district, we're going to shoot down anything we can. I think until we, I think we better keep making efforts to get them either out of the district or commit to staying in the district, but not on this fence thing forever, you know? So I think, you know, yes, we're beating our head against the wall, but I think we need to keep beating our head against the wall to get up or down in one direction rather. We can't just give it up. I think I, personally, I just learned a lesson about just, hey, let's just let it go away, because that's exactly what we did with the letter from, that went through the paper. We just say, ah, hopefully it goes away. You know, we've been doing this, I don't think we've been doing that, we've been trying, but I'm saying if we stop trying, we're going to be doing what we did with the letter. I'd say let's just keep talking.
We do have history of trying.
Yes, I, we do. I'm not throwing stones at anybody, I'm just saying, I think we should just keep trying. Maybe we change up the team, so the people who are tired of it, let's send somebody else out there to talk. You know, but I think we need to keep the dialogue going instead of going and saying ignoring. That's just my impression of it.
I think there's an awful lot to be taken away from this experience with Covington, with Hinsdale, and also with the Berkshire Education Task Force. And perhaps we ought to discuss all of these issues at a retreat or a special meeting or something like that. But as far as Covington goes, the thing that we've, I'm not sure the towns appreciate, the school committee is a creature of the towns. The towns created the regional agreement which empowers us. The towns without us can change the regional agreement. And previously, we've met with the seven towns, we haven't, we haven't tried to carry the ball ourselves. And I think I was going to propose this to the finance subcommittee, that we say, listen, the school committee is done with Covington. You may still pursue this, but what you ought to do is get a meeting of the seven towns and talk it through. Remember, they have to approve anything that we come up with. So it ultimately goes to the seven towns. The seven towns ought to see it from the beginning, and they ought to be talking amongst themselves, we shouldn't be trying to do this. And the other thing is, Hinsdale, we had, we had millions of dollars on the line here. We've been going for three or four years with Covington, over hundreds of thousands of dollars. Nothing compared to what we just went through. Why are we doing this? This is silly. If, if nobody else cares about millions of dollars, why should this school committee care about it?
The only thing I would just say about that is, it's, I don't think the seven towns are aware that what the problem is with letting Covington go. I think you're absolutely right, we should get the seven towns together and put it on the table and say, here's why Covington can't leave. You guys, the seven towns, need to get together to decide how Covington can get out and come up with, hey, are you willing to foot their OPEC bill?
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, put it on the table, just the way it is, and let them. But we should, we could facilitate that meeting.
That's a good point. We could tell them what's at stake here, and if the seven towns say, we're not going to subsidize Covington, I would say it's over.
That's what, eventually, at the end of the day, we agree to let them out, you know, the state agrees, the seven towns shoot it down because they don't want to carry the OPEC liability, it's done.
Yeah, maybe that's what we ought to do.
So it cuts the chase.
The only thing that confuses me on that issue is simply, if we just let it go and their student base gets down to zero, they're not going to end up paying anything. So we get to zero, no matter what. This way, picking up maybe 900,000, it would go into the kitty that is OPEC.
But is their student base ever really going to get down to zero? I love how many happen now, 16.
Gee, I don't know.
Or is that just the ad hoc committee?
23.
Or is that the ad hoc committee saying?
No, I understand. I just...
I'm not sure I understand that. We will always, even if they had no students coming, we would still be getting stay day for Covington. Which is, I don't know, it's roughly half or maybe it's less than half.
It's hard to calculate their impact on Chapter 70, but they would still be required for their local, you know, their net minimum, but if it's at zero, it's at zero in the money. You know, the money has to go to wherever they're going, but we're assessing school choice. So if they're in our district going elsewhere, you know, it's a complicated thing because we would still need money from the state or Covington for school choice because the state assessed us.
Well, I opened it by saying I was confused, maybe I... I'm just concerned that as it sits idly by, at one point, we were as high as almost $3 million, and then it slowly went down to the point it was around 900-something thousand by their standards, not by ours. And something of something is better than nothing of nothing. And if they're out, then there's no kids, and it's based on the numbers.
We can make that argument to the towns.
I think we need to facilitate that town meeting, so we get on the table and say, here's what it goes, here's the new, and I think we're, there's a new advantage that we didn't have before, is that algorithm from the state now has kind of locked in what the discount rate is. They've kind of got that locked, it's not a, it's not a subjective thing anymore, it's objective. So that's, that's kind of carved in, there's no discussion on that. So here it is, here's what you owe. The towns, you can either tell us what you want to pay, and we sit there with the seven towns, whether at the table, you guys want to pony up to pay them to get out of the district, or you guys want to pay your fair share? And leave it at that. But I think we can facilitate that, because I don't think the other towns have any clue that that's what's holding Covington up and getting out. They may, some may know it, but I don't really.
I don't think, I'm not sure that Beckett knows it. I wasn't sure that Beckett even knew what was going on with Hinsdale, which is why I went to their meeting and I started to talk to them. But that led me to believe that maybe it's important for us to go to select board meetings, not every meeting, I don't want to add that to our list of things to do, but periodically, every quarter, just make ourselves known, get on the agenda and talk about what's happening in our school. I just think we could avoid some of the things that had been, the Hinsdale thing, the Covington thing, if we're out there and we're looking like we're in a partnership instead of two isolated groups.
It might almost make sense as well to have more frequent seven-town advisory meetings as opposed to just during budget season, to just on that, you know, you make the invitation that, you know, they're having these meetings, if you come, you come, if you don't, you have an opportunity.
Well, I'm sorry, I reach an entirely different conclusion. We've had these meetings, look where it got us. What happened? Did that help the communication with Hinsdale?
They weren't here.
Well...
They're always welcome to come to a special meeting.
This has been, this is not just the last, the latest seven town, it's been two or three prior to that.
That means that it's not coming?
No, they've been there. So, you know what, that doesn't do any good.
Well, you know, it's just like at work, right? If you have a meeting and it's really not very effective and nothing to do, people stop coming, right? So if it's, if it's an effective meeting that there's concrete stuff to be done, people will be there. But if it's just kind of like, hey, this is going on at the school, they're like, I don't know.
We've done extensive budget presentations, we've done extensive MSBA presentation, we've done, I think we've done what they've done for subsidy lately.
And it's typically targeted to be a quarterly meeting, it's not just during budget season. And we do, the attendance has been, it's been very good.
It has been, and the participation, especially in court, has been active, there's a lot of dialogue. I don't, it is hard to, perception's reality, I guess.
Where were we, what were we talking about?
We're talking Covington update. Okay. Oh, Mr. Martell.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
With regard to the process of Covington being allowed to exit the district, as I remember first, it was voted on with the school committee, which was a yes vote. The next, I thought, was going to go to the towns for a vote, each town at a town meeting. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, we have to have a mutually signed transition agreement.
So you have to have that agreement before it goes to a town meeting?
Yeah. You also have to have, you think, really what the towns are voting on is a revision to the regional agreement, and that has not been consummated.
If it can get to a town meeting and voted on whether it's a yea or nay to allow Covington to leave, that's all it should be right now. And as you say, I agree, all the towns should be aware of exactly what is going to happen, what will happen, what the towns have to do should Covington no longer be in the district. I think... I think, speaking, speaking for Dalton, I'm pretty sure that we understand what was going on. I wouldn't have a problem bringing it to town meeting. I'd love to bring it to town meeting, just to bring it to town meeting and get it all done with. So I guess if we can get that agreement revised and just bring it to town meeting, and if you don't want it to negotiate with Covington any longer, or talk with Covington, just rewrite the, rewrite the agreement and put it to the towns, and then vote on it. If that will settle the matter. But unfortunately, it's gotta be both entities, school committee and towns, doing this. I don't, I don't think it's one or the other.
Okay. You know, I don't, I don't think it's a, it's, it's not a, I don't think it's, you know, the towns don't wanna let them out, it's a money thing. It's, it's the, it's the OPEB piece that is the challenge. So I don't know how, just going to the towns, or going to, having the towns vote on that, I think we have to have, they have to know they're voting on ponying up money to help Cov- you have to have that written, what the dollar number is.
Well, that would, that would be part of it, and that's part of the, getting the agreement rewritten, proposed to the towns, saying this is what it means.
Yeah.
Do you agree to it?
Yeah.
No? Or yes?
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't see getting the seven towns together to write it is going to get done. It has to be written by your group and then submitted to the towns. I don't see how you get, you, you would get the.
I don't see the towns writing it.
No, I don't see the towns writing it at all.
Nobody's proposing that.
Okay. So, it, let's, thank you for.
Covington has been on the agenda how many?
Well, it's been.
Yes, I think it will continue.
It's been three years now, it's been on the agenda all the time.
Anyway, it remains an enigma, and I wish we could resolve it, but we've got some good ideas tonight. Okay, subcommittees. I'm on curriculum. We haven't met, but we have one scheduled for August twenty-second, the next school committee meeting at six o'clock at Lucona. So please be there, we are going to be talking about special education, we'll have a presentation, and if anybody has any questions they have about special education in our district, please submit them to me and I'll ask them at the meeting, okay?
Is there anything you are giving against data-wise, just a question included in the presentation?
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, finance.
Okay, so we had a meeting last night, five o'clock. We talked about the end-of-year transfer request, which is in your packets, and we'll be making a motion on that, Helen. We also discussed transportation reimbursement funds received, and again, there's a motion to be made on that. Our next meeting will be August twentieth at five thirty P.M., and the topics for that meeting are potential litigation, which I think is on tonight, a snow plow bid, contract bid, and budget guidelines. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or about the end-of-year transfer before I make the motion. Okay, so I have two motions. The first, approval to deposit transportation reimbursement funds received in fiscal year nineteen to the regional transportation reimbursement account, funds to be used in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, and that is not what your motion said in your packets, and there was a revision to that, to offset the transportation assessment. So in your packets, it says fiscal year twenty-twenty, it should be fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School District Committee approves the deposit of two thousand nineteen transportation reimbursement funds into the Regional Transportation Reimbursement Fund, RTR, up to the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
The motion is second, we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Okay, the second motion, approval, and again, this is a little different than what the packets say, approval of fiscal year nineteen end-of-year budget transfers. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School District, Regional School Committee, excuse me, approves fiscal year nineteen end-of-year budget transfers in the amount of six hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay. Thank you.
Policy. That will be me tonight. We have not met, but we do have, I think about five second readings to go through for approval, so I'll get to that. The first is for the approval of the second reading, revision of policy three, four, eight, five, temporary substitute teachers and nurses. So be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the second reading, revisions to policy, say the same thing again, three, four, eight, five, temporary substitute teachers and nurses as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Next, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the second reading of revisions to policy six, one, four, zero, homeless students, enrollment rights and services as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the second reading to policy six, one, four, one, educational opportunities for children in foster care as, and as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Okay, next, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the second reading to policy six, one, four, two, educational opportunities for military families and as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion in a second, do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Okay, this last one is for revision to the bylaws, which we discussed last time, would be actual reduction in the number of meetings we have per year. So be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the second reading, revisions to the district bylaws, Article Three, as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Personnel.
First item is this, the summative evaluation of the superintendent, and one of the duties of the school committee is to evaluate the superintendent, one of the probably more important duties. So what Personnel did is we got together in attempt to create a consensus of comments that all of you had made on your evaluation forms, and I apologize, I think in prior years, everybody's gotten a copy of everybody else's assumptive evaluations, and we just didn't do it this year for some reason. But the Personnel Subcommittee saw it, put it together, and the comments by, I think about twelve members were very insightful, and I really appreciate the thought that many of you put into it. I think it helped us a great deal and made a much more meaningful evaluation than we did. Overall, the evaluation of the superintendent was, I would say, very positive, and that's what we tried to summarize in the item that's on page seventeen of your packet. Besides being a positive evaluation, she came across as exhibiting very strong leadership skills, particularly in teaching and learning, and most of you mentioned issues that the district has had, and we thought, and the comments said, that she has confronted those issues with initiatives and use of consultants or whatever to address those issues, and we are very optimistic that that's gonna bear fruit. So that's what you have on page seventeen, I hope that all of you have made that, and I will not rip that, and I will make the motion. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts the fifth FY nineteen summative evaluation of Superintendent Caston, as printed on page seventeen of the agenda packet, as recommended by the Personnel Subcommittee. Second.
We have a motion in a second, and is there any discussion? Any comments?
We, we were told that people were gonna make comments in support of this, I'm hoping that somebody does.
Hope you agree.
I would've said more, but.
Well, yeah, I just like, I just say something. So, you know, this is my opinion, but I have not, have nothing but a positive experience working with Lori every time, and sometimes I'll probably drive crazy because I send her emails, and, and I always get a response. She's always been open to what I have to say, whether it's a criticism or not a criticism, and, you know, I think we're blessed to have her heading this organization in the district. I think she's really committed to our, our students. I've talked to many parents who have said that even if they didn't feel that their child acted properly or was treated properly, they've always felt that, speaking with Lori has been a positive experience for them. And so, you know, this is why I'm saying that the parents of the children in this district really appreciate and value Lori, and so, that's what I'd like to say.
And I'd like to add that, you know, in addition to all that Lori does for the district this year, she's had the extra burden of the school building committee, and that's huge, and I don't know how she keeps up with all the meetings and all the emails associated with it, what she does, and I think that's pretty remarkable.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate the role, I very much enjoy it, thank you very much, I have a very excellent team of people I work with, so, and I enjoy working with the committee, thank you very much, it's appreciated.
And one last thing, Lori and I had a brief email because I commented to her about how recently press she has been, been made out to be a villain. And the response back to me was that, you know, sometimes people who are viewed from being within the district or from within the county are villainized, and I just responded back that in my personal experience, living in the community in which I live, my family has lived here since eighteen forty, I think I have a right to be considered a resident of Berkshire County. At times, I am accused of being an outsider, so I just wanted to share with her that, you know, I don't know how more ingrained my family can be in this community, but I'm still sometimes viewed as an outsider, so don't feel like it's just.
It's gonna take a while.
Twenty-one hundred and thirty. No, it's in every way, even the Disney recent time, people don't know you, I mean, anything that you, I mean, people, people know, I absolutely, I, I have a very positive home life, I have two beautiful little girls, I lead to come and do this work, I would never do it if it was not genuinely something I was passionate about and cared about, and I genuinely enjoy the relationships with the parents, the students, and the staff I work with every day in the committee, so I appreciate the role, I absolutely do, thank you very much. Okay, do we take a vote? Yes, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Yay.
So the next item is the supposed revision to the tool or the form that the school committee uses, and this work was done by Barbara and Bonnie, so I'm gonna let, which is how I, Bonnie's gonna have Barbara speak to it.
Okay. So we listened to what you all had to say a few times, and we've done this all together as a group, and what we heard universally was, the tool really lacks something for us. And, you know, perhaps it's that we only do it once a year and on one person, so it could be partially our responsibility that we aren't so in tune with it, but we thought we could make some changes that would just make it a more effective tool. Bonnie, stop me anytime. Most of the changes we did were about wording, and one of the things that seemed apparent to us is that some of the items that they were asking us to evaluate Lori on were not her job. As the superintendent, she supervises the administrators. The administrators then deal with the teachers who deal with the learners, but in many cases, some of these standards and the indicators expected Lori to be able to tell, to deal with the kids, and we had to make judgments about Lori and her relationship to the classroom, which wasn't her venue. So we changed some of the wording, we added some things in, in certain places, we added some new things, and for example, if you look at step one, I F one, we added recommends well-designed changes in curriculum to adjust to district needs and trends in education and supports with meaningful professional development. To us, that sounded like something that a superintendent does, and it should be in there, so we added that. We had the help of Mutants Evaluation Tool, so we took bits and pieces of theirs, we made it fit us. Again, if you look at standard two under management and operations, we separated some things out, we didn't add anything, we just separated them out. In standard three, under family and communication, we broke things into two, and we did add something new in terms of inform school committee of recommendations, events, and issues in a candid and timely manner, such that the superintendent is the primary source of accurate information. This is responsive to an issue we had in the past, where we were hearing things from different sources, and it was important that we hear it from Lori. So, not only did the words change a little bit, but the format changed, so you don't have to keep on going back and forth and back and forth. You do the evaluation, and then you go to the final page, and you fill in the blanks there. The other thing that we tried to do was to quantify, you know, it's really easy to do, you know, quality, looking at things from a qualitative point of view, but we tried to put a quant, we tried to quantify. So we looked at the scale, the rating scale, one to ten, and we fit that in. Many of you, in your responses, put arrows back and forth between things because it's not clear it's in this column or in this column, right? We've all done that? So by attributing a number, we think that we can get a more realistic picture of what's going on. So if you look at the numbers, the value of a rating is from one to ten, generally, a rating of one or two would indicate unsatisfactory, three to five, needs improvement, six to eight, proficient, and nine or ten exemplary. That gives you more room and leeway to make the appropriate number that you think is fitting. So those, Bonnie, anything else? Those are the major changes that we did, and we just think it's an easier tool to use. Lori agreed to giving it a go this next year, and we can always revisit if in fact it doesn't work for us. Anything else?
I would just add one thing that didn't change, is the fact that those standards are DESI standards, that's the one thing that has to, we don't, I don't like them, we don't like them, that's not really. we don't like them, that's not really what a superintendent does, but that's what DESI says the superintendent does, so we have to use that. So the plan, this is in, this is a contractual issue, so the plan going forward is to create a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, where we will change Lori's contract to allow us to use this as well as the old one. And so we will be voting on that at the next meeting, probably, that's where we are in this process.
Will we have to do both of these evaluations?
No.
No. You just said we have to use this one and the other one.
Well, in the contract will probably say use one or the other, or allow, you know, some words that allow us to go to something other than strictly the DESI that hasn't been written yet.
Any questions?
Just thank you for doing that. I felt like it was my baby.
Okay, so now we're up to...
So the next item...
Shall we wait?
Yeah, we have, we should go into executive session to talk about an MOU, which I suggest we wait until the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Safety and wellness, Nicole.
We did meet. So I'm gonna give hopefully a brief report, any questions, please do ask. We went over a few things. The first was Melissa gave us an update on the security revisions to three elementary schools, which are happening at the front entrances. The project is moving forward over the summer, there's a little bit of a delay, some doors, but the project should be completed by fall, hopefully by school start.
Hopefully by school start.
But maybe soon after. And there's just gonna be some safety enhancements in there, the entrance vestibule will be like kind of a staging area, there'll be a spot where visitors can wait, like a bench or chairs, there'll be a banker's drawer so that visitors can interact with office staff directly from that vestibule instead of entering the school. And, you know, I guess Craneville had some shrubs removed to increase their line of sight, and all this was done with the consultation of Chief Coke.
Will people coming into the building have to buzz in twice, or do they just walk in at first door and talk and then get buzzed in?
So twice, so you get buzzed in...
So the outside door, they're all?
Yes, but the hope would be there'd be a lot of people who don't actually need to move past it to the second, but yes, you're right.
And staff and teachers will have to swipe to get into the building, swipe their ID card. Second item was an update on the school resource officer that had been approved, a part-time position, which would have been an employee of Dalton Police Department, but unfortunately at this time, due to their staffing issues, that position is not going to be filled for the school year, just with some internal things that have gone on. Hopefully, Chief Coke didn't think it was going to happen this year, but hopefully we can look at it for next school year. We also went over a review of the prevention needs assessment, which is something that's completed every other year by eighth, 10th, and 12th graders, as administered by the United Way, and it just gives some feedback, and the United Way creates a report based on kind of a wide range of safety and wellness topics, everything from home to school, I think there's, you know, even just the home environment, and Lori can probably expand on this a little bit more if we need to, because I haven't actually seen the questionnaire, but the students will take kind of an online questionnaire, United Way will form a report, and the info is shared with administration, and then the safety measures committee looks at the information and decides how to make an impact. And some examples that were given by Ms. White, Mrs. White, last night was that they are going to, Vanessa can start some after-school clubs, they look to the students, probably the staff, as to what sort of topics the kids would enjoy doing, so that they have some after-school things to keep them busy. They've added an advisory period once a week, which will help to foster a relationship between students and staff, because that's an area they noticed on this tool that has declined from the last assessment to this assessment quite a bit. And the overall focus of this tool is to decrease risk and increase support to our students. Mr. Robb and Mrs. White plan to give the parents a presentation at the beginning of the year, like during an open house, and that presentation is hopefully going to be shared with us at this committee, or maybe at our safety and wellness committee, just to take a look, because we want to get home involved as well as... And Lori, this is the part I want to do, the shredder.
I'm sorry. I'm still trying to write them notes. I was gonna say, you have a great memory, that's everything we're talking about.
And then we went over the social-emotional action plans with the safe and supportive school review. We are currently entering year two, the first year, this was a grant that Lori had obtained. The first year was a survey, had some self-reflection, the survey was complete by a committee that was formed in each individual building, by a point person who then formed a committee. By completing, this is a survey, correct me if I'm wrong, it identified some priorities. There in the process, it looked like some of the action plans were actually drafted.
They're done.
Done, and ready to submit back to the state for year two funding, and that's kind of where we stand right now. Did I leave anything?
No, that was good, the action plans have all different kinds of, so the surveys per school identified there what they call urgent priorities in six areas, they're evidence-based to show positive correlation with social-emotional learning environments. And so then each school used the priority to come up with an action, so in each of the six areas, what your priority was, you needed an action around, and then you tied funding to it, in year two of the grant gives you the money to do it. So one of the things the elementary schools looked at is adding a zones of regulation program, and so that was a curriculum attached to, one of the priorities is teaching and learning in the classroom, how socially, emotionally driven it was, and that was a priority they're adding funds to. Craneville was looking at a mentorship program, so they all have different things now that the grant will fund. They each have a plan, and I think it will get around $20,000 for the grant for year two, so again, you know, the smaller elementary schools around $3,000, and the bigger schools closer to $5,000, which is, you know, not a lot, but it does go a ways when you're trying to come up with, you know, more specific terms and interventions like that. Couple book clubs, if you, the staff wanted, one of the things is around your staff capacity around trauma-sensitive classrooms, so a couple of the schools put in that they were gonna actually work with a consultant to do some coaching for staff on trauma-informed practices, so things like that are in there.
Yeah, yeah, it's a nice, you know, broad range. So, and then, I think that's some of our meeting, do you guys have anything to add?
I just want to bring up that I heard on the news that Oregon is now the state where children are going to be able to take mental health days. I know that attendance is always an issue, so it's kind of like a double-edged sword, but I think it's amazing that we're finally acknowledging that kids have mental health issues, and perhaps their anxiety is just too big that day for them to go to school. And what they've designed in their program is five absences in three months triggers an automatic referral to a student assistance counselor, so that they can discuss kinds of, you know, resources that the child might need, they could get family involved if necessary, but I just thought, finally, you know, we're talking about mental health in schools, and it needs to be talked about. So thanks. Okay, any questions for Nicole? Thank you. The next one was the McConaughey Building Project, and I think we're all talked out there. So we're gonna move right along to superintendent's report and recommendations, please.
There's a couple things to note that our assistant superintendent, teaching and learning, submitted around work that she's doing with both students and staff, she's had a lot of people here this summer with a lot of learning for both adults and students, but the two things I want to speak to, just the search process, for the director of finance and operations, we are accepting our reality, we are going forward with that, so we do have a group that is...
Much to our shame.
As much as we don't want, but we do have a group that has been formed, and we are, we're in a great place, because we have somebody who has done an excellent job and is living under very positive circumstances, so I think that makes the position more appealing, and hopefully will also make the transition positive. So the committee has been formed, it's a tough time of year, but we really do want to get somebody on board that you can approve by the August 22 meeting, so we do have transition time with the person and Melissa. We also have to anticipate that if it's somebody similar to Melissa, they will have a notice provision in their current district, so we want to be cognizant of that. If you have questions, though, as a school leader that you think should be asked, please send them to me. We are meeting on Monday to do an organizational-type meeting to discuss the process that we will use and to determine the questions, once we do that, I will share those with you. We do have a few candidates who are absolutely qualified, we're hoping to attract a slightly larger pool by reaching out to different groups, as opposed to the traditional ones we usually go through, and Melissa and I are trying to do that. So again, the interviews we're hoping to do on the 6th and 7th, and we're hoping to have a finalist or two, if possible, visit the district, if we are down to two people, I think it would be helpful for them to meet a little bit with Melissa and a few more people that can participate in the interview process. So if you can't participate in the interview process, but do want to be part of something like that, there will be an opportunity likely, and then a recommendation will just be coming out on the 22nd. That's our goal. Any questions, Melissa? And all I know right now, well, we definitely have more, and hopefully a candidate will recommend to you on the 22nd. The equity and diversity work, I just want to let you know that that is continuing this summer, and we have three subcommittees that have been formed, the third is going to be meeting in next week, but the first two have already met. The Family and Community Engagement Committee has actually already been doing quite a bit of work, largely due to Chief Coe, who is a member of that committee, Annie Pecor and Robert Fazio and Allison Peters. Chief Coe already set up, so we have the book that, Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting in, Sitting Together in the Cafeteria, the 20th anniversary edition, that book was originally published 20 years ago, basically what Beverly Tatum is writing about is that very little has changed a lot, so backwards. So we're reading that book as a school, and Sarah DeFazio and Stephanie from Multicultural Bridge are leading a book group, so Chief Coe thought that it would be a really good idea, so let's get some copies of that at the senior center and the CRA to get the community involved, and then I got an email from Allison Peters today, that Chief Coe had just dropped the books off and set up, he sets up a display around it and what it is and the pledge, and they're all already checked out. So it was really good. So that work is still happening, I'll continue to update you, the large committee has not met this summer, the subcommittees aren't getting going and focusing, so we have a lot of community involvement, so that's good.
Okay. Thank you very much, recommendations?
We're good.
Personnel?
We're hiring.
Okay.
Pretty much most of our positions are filled or in the process of final recommendations at this point, which is good.
Okay, before we go into our second executive session, is there any old business? Any new business? Remarks for the good of the community?
I'll just add one thing, I read that book, by the way, that all it ends was very much, it's a book to read, so I would suggest you pick it up.
We have several copies in the office.
Okay, at this point, we have a motion.
Madam Chair, may I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Both as a member of the Dalton Select Board and Dalton representative on the Southern Town Board, we have our next select board meeting on Monday, I would love to have the appropriate one of our Dalton reps to come and educate the board, not a debate, not a discussion, but educate the board of the vote that was taken this evening, so we appreciate the impact, but we know how a town Dalton should vote in the matter of the moves forward. So, thank you.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee goes into executive session at 8:58 PM in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations with the CPDA unit, for which the chair has declared an executive session is necessary to protect bargaining position of the committee, and to not reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session. We will convene, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, superintendent, will you take the roll call?
Ms. DeTmaso.
Yes.
Ms. DeTmaso.
Yes.
Mr. Emerson.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Mr. Lacatelle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lazzori.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Ms. Paul.
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Waager.
Yes.
Dr. Cufftris.
Yes.
For the executive session.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. And we have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? May? Okay. Thank you, good meeting, everybody.
Can you just pass those MOUs down?